Portsmouth City Council, on behalf of my colleagues, I want to welcome all of our citizens to this meeting. In accordance with Governor Ralph Northam's declaration of a state of emergency due to the novel coronavirus Executive Order 51 on March 12th, 2020, and the local declaration of emergency ratified by the Portsmouth City Council and due to the coronavirus pandemic which is continuing in the Commonwealth of Virginia. This call meeting of the Portsmouth City Council is being held by video conference on the 23rd day of February 2021 without a quorum present in the City Council chamber in order to reduce the likely spread of the coronavirus in accordance with City Council Ordinance 2021 and 2020-102. Each City Council member is participating from their home or other remote location, and I am in the City Council chamber. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes? Mr. Battle?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Dotna Whitaker?
Yet present.
Mr. Woodard?
Here.
Mayor Glover?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Members of council, we have for our consideration the minutes of a virtual call meeting on February 8th, 2021, a virtual call meeting on February 9th, 2021, and a virtual regular meeting on February 9th, 2021. Is there any discussion of the minutes? We're in need of a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dotna Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
The minutes are approved.
Madam Clerk, please read our speaker statement.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to three minutes, excuse me, five minutes to speak. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than any particular member of City Council, staff, or audience, and should be limited to matters that only the public enforcement city council can influence. A student who fails to address and observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to include his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
We've come to the portion of the City Manager's Report, item 21-77. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance we are considering.
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend Section 10-119 of Chapter 10 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, as amended to change the voting location for Precinct Number 36 from Scottish Rite Temple to Churchland High School located at 4301 Cedar Lane, and to formally change the name of Precinct Number 36 to Churchland High School.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any speakers registered for this item?
No, sir.
Council members, is there any discussion on this item? Councilmember Moody, you have the floor, sir.
Might be a good idea if a member of staff would speak to why the changes are being made. I think most of us realize it, but many members of the public may not.
Thank you, Dotna Councilmember Moody for that. Mr. Pace, could you provide an update, please? Can you all hear? Okay.
I think there's something wrong with this mic. Can you all hold just a minute?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, Vice Member of the City Council, please forgive my mic for acting up. Churchland High School is located at 4301 Cedar Lane. The proposed polling place is within the precinct boundary lines. The school has 531 parking spaces, is handicap accessible, and has 13 handicap parking spaces and on the street. There will be additional handicap parking spaces during a general election if needed. The Precinct Number 36 has 4,072 registered voters as of February 5th, 2021. As required by the Department of Elections, the proposed ordinance also designates the name of the precinct as the name of the voting location, and this was submitted by the registrar. Thank you, sir. Are there any other open discussions from my colleagues? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please do the roll call.
Sir, we need those.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Move for approval.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Second.
Seconded. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dot Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
We've come to the caption of new business, item 2178, boards and commissions.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have three items to present to council for consideration for voting. The first motion is a move pursuant to council authority. A move that all members of Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission be removed with notice to reapply.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, council members, do we have any discussion on the matter? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
No.
Mr. Moody?
No.
Dotna Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
This item is adopted fine to.
Second item. Pursuant to State Code 15-2-4904 and City Code 2-813, a move that all members of the Economic Development Authority be removed with notice to reapply.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion to the matter? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
No.
Mr. Moody?
No.
Dotna Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
No.
This item fails.
And you can let the public know that's because it requires a unanimous vote.
That is correct, sir.
And the last motion, this is a motion to appoint or reappoint the following persons to the following boards and commissions. For the Board of Zoning Appeals, appointment Amberke Bolden, Danielle Lauren. To the Clean Community Commission, which I want to commend our Vice Mayor. This was one of the commissions that he spoke up and got quite a few people to apply who had not previously been involved. Crystal Gamble, Jocelyn Grigg, Eric Lopez, Herbie Damas, Ashley Strickland Austin, Kimberly Blunt, Melania Foster, Ben Foster, Thomas Owens III. To Community Criminal Justice Board, appoint Latoya Hill and Lieutenant Colonel Chris Walz. For the Economic Development Authority, appointing Anthony Brown. To the History Commission, appointing David Sommers. To the Library Board, Amy O'Donnell. Parks and Recreation Commission, appointment Joe Harmon. Planning Commission, Danielle, appointing Danielle Barnes. Portsmouth Parking Authority, appointing James Cullen. To Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority, appointing Zakita Cost. Appointment to Social Services Advisory Commission, appointing Marilyn Hill. Wetlands Board, appointing Shakina Bamberg. To the Downtown Design Committee, reappointing Chris Crowder and Ian Bond. Those complete all of the appointments and reappointments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion by my colleagues on council? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dotna Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
Thank you.
We've come to item 21-79, items submitted by council members. And item A, Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. A resolution rescinding the local revenue allocation policy, governing the allocation of local revenue to Portsmouth Public Schools.
Madam Clerk, were there any speakers?
Mayor, council members, and fellow public participants, good evening. I understand the frustration of the council members who brought this motion forward for discussion and action tonight. But I believe that to rescind the funding formula rather than to amend it to better reflect the reality of the needs of the school system would be throwing the baby out with the bathwater. The funding formula came about as a result of a good faith effort on the part of a committee with representatives from the schools, from the council, and from the public in general. And the idea provides a safety net for school funding. Recognizing that this particular council we have in place is a much more school-friendly council than I have seen in the past 24 years, it may seem that having a safety net isn't necessary. But councils come and councils go. And I believe that having a funding formula that accurately reflects the needs of the schools, that has a rule that would provide them adequate support in normal operating circumstances is needed should the makeup of the council change, as it does periodically. So I would ask you to use the state of emergency to suspend for this budget year the policy rather than rescind it, and work out what the proper formula ought to be for use in the next budget year, as opposed to rescinding it altogether. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Dotna Whitaker?
Dotna Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Goodall Yotrowski. I normally don't respond to speakers unless necessary, but I think because we know that you are definitely one of the citizens that is very concerned about our community and have expressed your concerns in a way that has always been one that has been respectful to council and as well as to fellow citizens. But I would like to just say that the funding formula that has been placed before us for consideration, this motion was not put, this item was not put on the agenda. It wasn't really out of frustration. It was really out of the viewpoint that we want to do what's right by our schools. Also, as far as the good faith effort, and I know that from the previous council and the relationships between the previous council liaisons, that this was not a good faith effort, that it was a formula that was actually forced upon the school board. The school board did not have much input to the final formula, and so it wasn't really done out of a pro-education perspective. And then as far as the funding formula being a safety net, I would think the safety net in this case is that we make sure that we put persons on council that are pro-education. That's the safety net, because the formula can be changed from council to council. However, when we put people who truly value education in our children, which I believe the majority of this council does, that you're going to see that it doesn't just run on a platform of putting education first, but we're going to do it through how we're going to fund our schools this year. And so I just want to share that with you. I'm for voting down the funding formula so that we can negotiate and make sure that our schools are funded as they should be and do it in a way of harmony, working together in a spirit of unity that I believe you will see between this present council and the school board, and definitely between Vice Mayor Barnes and myself, who are the council liaisons to the school board. Let me thank you, thank you for your input.
Thank you, sir. And as we, Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the work that you've done for bringing this to us. As a member of council who was an advocate, strong advocate for the funding formula last year, we thought that those factors that were put in place would be efficient to give us an adequate formula. But we see now that there are some missing equations, specifically in reference to pandemic. There are some things that had to be removed out of that and some funding that we did not receive from the state. So as a person who was an advocate last year, I do understand that we're living in Portsmouth urban, in urban city, and we need more resources to ensure that our children and our staff have what they need in order to be whole. So I was going to follow the leads of this new council and have us to take a step back until we can go and look at the funding formula again, massage our meeting with our joint City Council and School Board last night as that our liaisons, Councilman Dr. Whitaker and Vice Mayor Barnes, go back to the table with the school board liaisons, Claude Parent, and I believe Sarah Duncan-Hines, to relook at that at some time in the future. And I would be willing to do that. Specifically, coming out of the pandemic, a lot of the factors that we had put into the equation for the funding formula to be whole, where it yielded $2 million above the superintendent's need last year. But of course, this is a new year. So I would be willing to take a step back and have us to rework the funding formula. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lucas Burke. And Vice Mayor Barnes, I saw your hand up, sir. You have the floor.
I just wanted to say, as somebody who was on the receiving end on the school board when the funding form was put in place, the most of the schools that banked off of the way it was constructed that it wouldn't be beneficial towards the school board or the school system, especially our kids. So regardless of all the things that was put in play for it, it just wasn't beneficial. At the end of the day, we talk about building the relationship with the school board. I think this is a good faith effort of building the relationship, letting them know that there is trust there, that they're trusting that they want to do the right thing when it comes to the people running. And like I said last night, we all ran on education. And fully funding education. This is the first time in history of Portsmouth that we can actually do that. So looking forward to working with this council and the school board to get that done, making sure that our kids benefit. Because at the end of the day, we want to give our children the best opportunities to succeed. And that's what it's all about. And I'm sure everybody on this council cares about our kids, and I'm glad that we are able to get to this point where we can show that good faith effort with the school board.
Mr. Mayor?
Dotna Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Right, I just want to make sure, because I know there's going to be a lot of community discussion about the past funding formula and what you're going to see council do during this budget year. Just want to make sure when we are putting out information about the funding formula being more than what the schools requested. For example, last night it was presented that, that was the first time we had heard that it was going to be $1 million more. Just heard a figure that it was $2 million more last year. Just wanted to remind the citizens that the amount that is being stated as being more, that was after the superintendent had to cut back what was being requested as needs. That was not $2 million above their need request. So that's a difference. And so what you saw and what you're hearing about it being more, that's more in reference to after the superintendent had cut back down to make sure that there were pay increases for the teachers. That was not a good faith $2 million plus or $1 million plus. So I just want to make sure we're clear on that as we discuss further how we're funding the schools. But we are looking forward to funding the needs as presented to us last night. And we're going to hopefully challenge our CFO and persons to present a budget that includes that.
Right. Thank you, sir. Are there, before we call on other members who've already spoken, let's give the other members a chance to speak. Mr. Battle, Councilmember Battle, Councilmember Moody, Councilmember Woodard, do you have any comments that you would like to make, sirs?
All I'd like to say is that we can manipulate formulas to do anything we desire. When you're dealing with a formula, you're dealing with the intent of the people that's paid to put it together. And I don't think that that's a good format that would meet the needs of our kids and our school system. I have never supported it, and I won't support it unless the formula has a truly good faith effort in it. But I don't see that in the foreseeable future. I have no problem doing what we have to do in negotiations.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Woodard? Do you have any comments, sir?
Not really. I just concur with my fellow colleagues. Not supporting this formula anymore. I think we heard a lot of chatter from the school board yesterday and up till this date, and pretty much I'm aware of how this may hinder our schools. And what we want to do going forward is just fully fund them and make sure that we're doing the right thing for our kids within the city.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Moody, do you have any comments, sir?
No comments, other than it looks like I'll be the dissenting voice on it. Not because I don't believe the schools need adequate funding, but I've sat through 22 years' worth of seeing teachers, seeing administrators have to come literally beg from councils on the amount of funding that they needed. If I were in their place, I would lots rather have a formula that's fair, equitable, that I can put a pin to and know how that figure was devised, not from a council member that may support schools, doesn't support schools. I'd like to think every member of council supports children. If you support children of school age in the city, you got to support schools. I think a formula took away the fact that they had to come and get out the troops, so to speak, to literally beg for funding. I think a formula, if it's done properly, is a more professional way to do it. I think it's something that they can do some prior planning for. I think it gives them skin in the game. Our city has a lot of revenue producers getting ready to come online in the coming years. So they have a piece of the action, so to speak, with the formula. And they don't have to come with a hat in their hand to say, please, Mr. and Mrs. Councilmembers, you know, I need some money. With a formula, they have a piece of that action. But that's why I'll vote against it. And I agree with the previous speaker, which probably in the past I haven't agreed with him on a lot of things, but I do. Uh probably in the past, I haven't agreed with them on a lot of things, but I do, I do uh like his points. Uh I think they're well taken. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Vice Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have, did you have a question, sir? Or a comment?
And to add some, and and to add something not to Woodard, could say um one of the reasons that um this was brought up, that I brought it to the table. Because two, it didn't have any type of baseline. So with that, the school system could have gotten less less than they got in the previous year. Which was pressing a a very bad situation with constant supporting our kids. I just wanted to add that to it.
Thank you, sir. Uh Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just uh one additional comment, and I think that that the the prior vote towards. The funding formula was based on the report that was given us. Now, the superintendent gave us a report that it was his. Estimate of needs. So if there was some cutbacks or something that we didn't know about, then we didn't know about it. We can only go on. What report was given to us and the estimate of needs that was given to us showed that the formula produced. An additional two million dollars. Now, I'm not on the school board, I hadn't been, and I don't, you know, work with those. Talk with anybody every day. So if there was some cutbacks that we as a council didn't know about it, we didn't have that information. So I just want to make that clear.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lucas Burke. And so be be before we get into to 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 asking for the motion and seconded. We kind of got ahead of the game a little bit with the comments. Uh I I would like to make a comment. And I I do this in a in a very thoughtful and and an important way to convey to. First, our educators, our parents, our students, our school board and our superintendent. As your mayor and leader of this council, I have consistently. And 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 this is important for everybody to understand. I have been a consistent supporter of education. And the 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 real formula, I think we all need to take into mind, is the formula of all of us. Working collaboratively together to make and support our school system, our school leadership. To be the best that it can be. And if we do that collaboratively, the council and the school board. And citizens, everybody is in on the game of education. Because ultimately, the children are our future and it's the best option that we have in order to improve and grow our community. So I encourage everybody to be all in, in terms of whatever formula we come up with. Let that formula be us working together, collaborating together, sharing ideas, best practices. And being positive so that we can move our school system forward. Thank you. So with that said, is there, do I have a motion?
Motion to rescind the local revenue allocation policy.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we've already had the discussion. So Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes. Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
No.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes.
This item is adopted six one.
We now have um item two twenty-one point seven nine, item B. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering?
Yes, sir. An ordinance confirming and continuing ordinance twenty dash twenty-one dash one oh two. Excuse me, twenty twenty dash one oh two, adopted on October thirteenth, twenty twenty. Any emergency procedures established there to ensure the continuity of local government during the COVID nineteen pandemic.
Madam Clerk, were there any speakers?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mark Goddard Yatroski.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Yatroski. Have you joined us?
Good evening again, Mayor, council members and fellow public participants. There is a momentary delay when you press the appropriate buttons to to come into the conversation. So that's that's what happens each time.
Yes, sir.
Um, as as this pandemic continues, uh there is some light. That looks as though it's from the end of the tunnel, although I'm I'm not sure any of us actually sees where that end is. And so I um have no quarrel with you reauthorizing. The emergency ordinance that has been in place for almost a year now. My concern continues to be that the means by which the public participates in these proceedings is deficient. Um, you hear me and my fellow citizens who are attending this meeting by by electronic means can hear me. But you can't see me as you would if I were in the chamber. I do not uh do not interpret that, please, as uh a desire on my part. For meetings to occur in the council chamber under the current circumstances. No, what I'm asking for again is that I have on several occasions uh over the course of this. This unpleasantness is that you up the game in terms of the technology you're using. To enable the public to participate in these proceedings. Because you are acting on the behalf of the public. But you will note as you go back through the minutes of the virtual meetings. That public participation by this particular means has been extremely limited. And that's because of the difficulty of navigating it, I believe, as somebody who has navigated it. And and sat with it with its imperfections. I have also participated in planning commission meetings. And I find their mode of public participation vastly superior to this. I I really do not understand why council is not using that form. Uh for the public to play its role in the proceedings. And I would ask you to reexamine your methodology.
And uh thank you, uh Mr. Mark Goddard Yatroski. Uh that is one of the um questions that I posed to council members. Uh when there was a question being formulated on whether we would desire to meet back as a public body. And of course, we are not ready to do that until the governor releases a new executive order, which calls for more people to gather gather in a public place. But I, being one of the liaisons with Councilum uh member uh Woodard, uh we are member uh liaisons to the planning commission. And I have seen how their meetings are run and their public speakers do get an opportunity to call in and to speak on screen. Um and so they they use Microsoft Teams as well. So um I did pose that question uh to. Our council members to see if that would be an option for us to at least allow our public speakers to be present. Uh visibly and audibly uh during uh our council meetings as our duty to allow public speakers to present their issues of concern.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lucas Burke. Are there any other other uh questions or comments? Well, uh Doc- Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the.
In that in that regard, isn't that just a matter of uh uh us directing the IT, uh IT person to make that happen? And I thought that was the the email that went out. I thought that was um a consensus of council. I didn't see anyone have any problems with with that. And I would like, yeah.
Dr. Whitaker, I was just gonna say, um only two council members commented. And we did not get a consensus of council to move forward with that. That's all I was waiting on.
Okay.
Let's get one tonight.
Yeah, yeah, let's let's move forward on, I'm I'm for it.
I'm for it.
I am.
I support it. I think we got the analogy, the capability to go ahead and forward.
Right.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're muted. You're muted. You're muted.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We need a motion.
Move for approval.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Yes?
Second.
So we have a motion and seconded. Um Madam Clerk, we are ready for the question. Could you please talk a little?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
Yeah.
Mr. Battle.
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Woodard.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Barnes, are are you prepared to read the statement that 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 was forwarded to you, sir?
Yes, sir. I did have a comment too regarding uh okay.
You you're freezing up, sir. On the screen, I don't know if you control that or not, but. You're in suspension.
I have the motion too, Mayor, if he's frozen.
Okay, um uh Vice Mayor Barnes, we're we're gonna ask Dr. Whitaker to read the motion. Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Go 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 ahead, Dr. Whitaker.
Okay. Pursuant to Virginia Code subsection two point two dash three seven one two B. Within fifteen days of this notice, city council intends to conduct closed meetings at an undisclosed location. Or electronically for the purpose of interviewing candidates for the position of city manager. Should the need arise to conduct additional closed meetings for the same purpose after the fifteen day period ends. City council will reissue this notice.
Thank you, sir. We have now come to report on pending items. Mr. Pace, are there any pending items?
No, Mayor, there are no pending items.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers tonight?
Mr. Mayor, there is one pending, one more pending.
Okay, okay.
This is just for attorneys. Yes, sir. This is just for Attorney Stromberg. Um do you have any timeline when you're going to respond? Um I've uh requested at the last council meeting about the language in um Virginia Code fifteen point two dash nine six five. Point one, dealing with participation of small women-owned and minority-owned businesses. Uh that language coming outside of just our procurement policy to being a standard ordinance. Given the uh city manager uh authority to act when there is a statistically significant difference. In the utilization of women and minority-owned businesses. And also, and also um dealing with the definition of small. So the um when are you planning on reporting back on this?
I thought uh you had mentioned uh that it would be at the next council meeting that uh I thought you had mentioned that after uh. It'd be the meeting after the uh we dealt with the school board and 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 after this meeting. Uh we can, we can have that for you. Probably before the next meeting, probably uh next week sometime, early next.
Okay, all right, all right. Thank you.
And and while we're on pending matters, if if I might, uh the franchise agreement, cell phone franchise agreement went out. That's supposed to be taken up, I think, in March seventh meeting, as well as a memo that went out regarding the uh. Recision of the uh one percent increase in the meal tax. Uh if y'all haven't uh checked your emails, that should all be there. And uh those are sort of report back items. If you have any questions, feel free to call me. Uh and they can be taken up at, you know, put on the agenda at a future meeting. But if you have any questions on those two memos that went out, feel free to call the office.
Thanks, sir.
I have one thing, man.
Okay, Vice, you have the floor, sir.
If if there's no uh, can you hear me?
We 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 can't hear you, sir.
If there's no objection from council, I would like an update from River Casino and I. Be on the casino and the amenities associated with her and also the progress of it.
It wasn't clear.
I I I didn't, we we we. We we didn't get the the instruction clear, sir.
Hear me now? Is that sound better now?
Yeah.
Saying there's no objection from council, I would like an update um regarding the River Casino. Regarding the status of the casino and the amenities so- associated with it.
Vice Mayor Barnes, this is Dr. Lavoras. I just want to let you know that uh based upon your request, I'd already put it on my agenda. To be um having some more to give an update relative to the casino in the next meeting on March night.
When when is it possible to actually get it from the casino people?
I can check with him to find out if they um are able to come and make a presentation, yes.
Thanks, sir. One more thing, um last night, um Councilman Battle mentioned. Um about taking taking back and for the fleet of buses for the school system. Um is can we look into that? There's no objection from council, because that's something I would like to do, think will save the school system some money and as well.
Right, um I I didn't comment on that last night relative to those two things with regard to the fleet and the landscape. Because one of the concerns that we had with regard to that, as you know, it is hard to find. Uh to attract and retain people that do mechanical work. And that's a problem that we've been having in the Public Works Department. One of the things that we would end up doing is having to do an RFP for that contract as well. Uh when we had a conversation with Dr. Bracy for not only the fleet, but also the landscape. The school board holds him accountable for making sure that the fleet uh is is proper for school bus drivers and everybody else who works for the school system. As they do also with the landscaping contract. And so that's why we had a conversation and in that meeting. Uh we didn't have any opposition from them relative to taking over those contracts. Making sure that one, the contract would go back to them for them to manage. Uh I don't, I do remember how it got over with us. But by the same token, uh having an opportunity to give that contract back to them along with the funds that go along with it. Would give them their control uh from the school board to make it sure that one, they were responsible to their uh school board. For landscaping and the appearance of campuses throughout the city. And also make sure that they were responsible for their own fleet with regard to. The the operability of of those cars in their fleet. So when we had that meeting with them, there was no opposition to doing that. As long as they knew that the funding that we had already had was coming with.
Um, but can can we reach out to them again? Because I remember when being on the school board and we found out about it. At the joint meeting last year and 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 it was a surprise and they really didn't know. So can we reach out to you that was the one do and um can you report that back to us?
Yes, I can assure you that I can reach out with them. Um as a matter of fact, we've had two meetings and we just had a recent meeting about maybe two weeks ago. With regard to them. So I will reach out to Dr. Bracy, have a conversation with him to make sure that there's no discrepancy with regard to what we were we were planning. And I'll uh give you a report back.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, the minority uh participation agreement uh. That we did the study on, uh it'll expire in March. Uh do we want to put something in place now? So we won't have to do it again and spend the, you know, funding that we did uh to do the study that's already done. to do the study that's already done? It would, go ahead, go ahead, sir.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
I may want to check with Attorney Stromberg, but I, I believe that it has, regardless, it has to be updated. The, the, the study has to be updated, I believe, every five years.
Okay.
Yes, sir. We'll, 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 we'll check with Attorney Stromberg and, and interim City Manager Pace. They'll, they'll collaborate on getting the right answer and information that we need on the minority study, when it needs to be updated and what the process needs to be to get that done. Okay. Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'd like to call upon Attorney Stromberg to explain what the process would be for this council to rescind the one percent increase in meal tax. I know he, he sent a, a email this afternoon, but since it was brought up in public, I think it would be a good idea to give some feedback publicly as well.
Do you want that now, Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Okay. It's very complicated to end the meal tax or rescind it and bring it down by a percentage right now. It would be much easier to do it at the end of the fiscal year and start with the new fiscal year and the new budget. The reason for that is that it'd be tough to pick, number one, an effective date. The meal tax comes in usually a month after it's incurred. It's a fiduciary tax where the restaurant owner has to hold that tax. The, the, the customer actually pays it, and the restaurant owner just holds on to that tax and conveys it. The Commissioner of Revenue collects it. It's done monthly. And to, if, if we, if we did notice of it right now, it wouldn't take effect until April one. And the other problem is, it's been put in the budget. The revenues from that money, from that tax is part of the, this year's budget. And so there, there'd have to be a way to replace that money or reduce expenses in the budget, because we can't run a deficit. We're not allowed to run a deficit. So what we're recommending, and you'll see in the email, is that we just wait a couple more months, and if council wants to reduce it then, that would be the easiest way to do it. It would be just part of the annual budget process, and it could be incorporated right into the budget at that time. I'm not sure if a hearing has to be held. I don't think so because it's being reduced, not increased. Since it's being reduced, I don't think a hearing will be required. But again, the two problems are the unstudied flow of meal tax and when it comes into the Commissioner of Revenue. It's delayed using a month and the hole it creates in our budget that has to be replaced or expenses have to be reduced. So what we're recommending is you just wait a couple more months, and we take this up in the new fiscal year, starting July one. The earliest, if, if we try to do it the other way, the earliest who would take effect would probably be April or May. And so we're, we're, we're talking just a couple of months before it can be done without a revision to the, to the budget. So that's what we're recommending. It's all spelled out in the email. It's a fairly simple email. You guys may not have had a chance to read it because we just got it out. But read it, and I think you guys will agree that this is the, that would be the best course of action.
And that makes sense. I, I agree.
And, 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 you know, we would even have to, if we did it early, that we would maybe even have to refund money, which would almost be impossible. So I, I think, you know, just wait for a couple more months and do it then. Feel free to call me after you read the email if you have any questions, but it's fairly straightforward. Jeff Miller in our office did it. Excellent email. So take a look at that and just give me a call if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Battle, Councilmember Battle, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, let me explain the meal tax situation. It was a one percent tax that they attached to funding meals for underprivileged kids in the school system. I didn't want to do the tax, and, and I tried to show the council different route that we could take. The actual money is anticipated from the tax is about three hundred twenty thousand dollars. So I requested to our colleagues that they take that out of the fund balance and not put that burden on the restaurants. They refused to do it, and therefore I was compelled to vote for that tax. And unless we.
Mr. Battle, sir, that, what you're saying is not totally accurate. And, and, and let me just be clear with you. You did vote. You did vote. You did vote for the meal tax, sir. You had every option not to vote.
I was not, I was out of town at that time.
You, sir.
And I did, yes, oh, no, I did vote for it. And the reason I voted for it was to feed the children. So again, if it's, if, if that's what it's attached to, and we're not gonna take it out of the fund balance to pay for it, then I'm, 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 I won't change my vote.
Thank you, sir.
Funds from that was attached for meals for the kids. Am I right?
Thank you, sir, for your comments.
But am I right?
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke, sir, you have the floor. Sir, sir, you are out of order, sir. I've given you the floor, and you are out of order. I've given you the floor, and you are out of order, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, at the time, I was working with a liaison to the school board, and one of the reports that was presented to us came from out of Henrico County, where they had used a meal tax to, as a fun, as a funding formula, as part of the funding formula. It was actually one of the equations that was in the funding formula. There was those factors that I was talking about that were removed from the funding formula, and it not was just for underprivileged kids. It was to supply that additional fund in an amount of, I believe it was three hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars for that one, one percent. And it is an increase, the amount that we were supposed to get was supposed to be one million dollars that was gonna go to the school system as a result of that meal tax increase. And I know that our finance department has that report, and that's why I wanted our financial director to be able to give us a report on that funding formula, just so that we could see all of the factors that went into that, and the meal tax was one that was removed, and some other factors were removed. So the formula was all busted, for lack of other words to say. So that was why I was in agreement with us rescinding the funding formula, and of course, the meal tax. I'm in agreement with waiting until July one until it can be effectively done appropriately, and we can look at it at some additional time. But that was a great program that Henrico County did, a one percent yield of then one point three million and a, a two percent, every percent that it went up, it was an additional one and a half million dollars that they gave to their schools. So that was just another avenue that I was looking to help fund our schools for a lack of money that we were losing as a city, as a locality.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, uh, Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna respectfully ask you, in the future, to respect me and allow me to complete what I'm trying to express, and not to interrupt me like I'm a child. And I'm gonna do this as one time. And every time you do it from now on, I'm gonna ask you again not to be disrespectful to me. I've had enough. Now, may I complete?
Sir, 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 you are out of order once again. And when you are out of order, you will be called as such, and you will be asked to wrap up your comments. Now that is, that is the way we're gonna conduct this meeting.
You're doing that out of order because you didn't cut them all twice, and you didn't let them finish his statement. I think, I think you need to allow people to finish their statement when they're talking.
Thank, thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, sir. We, we have now reached the part of, of, of the program or the agenda for non-agenda speakers. Do we have any non-agenda speakers, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. First speaker. Excuse me, our first speaker is Mr. Bracy Parr.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. My name is Bracy Parr, and I reside at eleven Afton Parkway. Approximately one year ago, I spoke before City Council, and our now mayor encouraged me to get active in the local community, and I definitely hope y'all won't live to regret Mayor Glover's encouragement, but I am now the president of the Craddock Civic League. I'd like to, on behalf of that body, thank the council members that attended our January meeting upon invitation. And secondly, I'd like to recognize Black History Month. We cannot move forward as a community nor as a city without acknowledging our history and the divisions that it's caused, I mean, right down to the pronunciation of the name of our community. I say Craddock, my fiance says Craddock, and I think it shows how divided we are within Portsmouth. With that said, the Civic League is working to improve our community for all, and I really challenge council and the whole Hennepin Road to try to find a more diverse neighborhood. We've got black, white, Hispanic, Latino, Protestant, Catholic, young, old, wealthy, poor. I really could go on and on, but the Civic League represents and is going to advocate for all Craddockians. To that end, we have two FOCs for the league over the next two years. The first is public safety, and for that, we've already sent a letter, I believe, that is under the review of the city attorney in regards to the criminal blighted property at nineteen Afton. We've been attempting to clean up this situation for over half a decade now, and we're really looking to council for support here. The second, we'd like to offer a solution to, to the crime problem here in the city. We've noticed that many crimes have been able to be solved with footage from Ring cameras. I mean, just as we put cameras on our police officers to be able to see their actions, we believe that these Ring cameras and other technology of the same kind can really help improve safety in our city. We've already seen crimes being solved from the material that the police have been able to obtain from this, material that is fact, factual, it's not accusing anyone that is not doing anything wrong. So we believe this is a good option to pursue. We would encourage council to create some sort of incentive for homeowners to install these Ring, Arlo, or Nest cameras so that we can effectively fight crime across the city. I'd be willing to discuss this idea with anyone on council. The second focus that we have is reviving Afton Square. There are a number of thriving small businesses in the square. And back in two thousand and five, the study was gardened, where we hope we'll be able to start a youth mentorship program this summer. We hope to have council's full support of all of these initiatives and more as we move Craddock forward. Thank you.
You're muted, sir.
Do we have any other non-agenda speakers, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. The next person is Mr. Mark Adalde Gietrowski.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, Council, and fellow public participants. I wanted to comment on the, the HRA supplement that was discussed in the work session tonight. I recall when the idea was introduced by former city manager Rowe to improve the city's balance sheet by eliminating one of the major liabilities that the city had for other post-employment benefits. And his methodology for doing that was to have retirees from our supplemental retirement system migrate from the city's health insurance system. The city was at that time and still is self-insured to use the Medicare that they had contributed to over the course of their work life for the city. There was a great deal of anxiety among the population that, that was involved in this. They were comfortable, even though the, the premium rates were rising for them year after year, as they were for the city. They, they were comfortable with what they had, and they, they faced, you know, the uncertainty of going to Medicare with, with a certain amount of dread. To sweeten the deal, there was a stipend provided. But as originally presented, manager Rowe intended for that to be a phased-out stipend, that it would be fourteen hundred dollars the first year and taper off over a period of, of three to five years. As the people who had, had done the transition recognized that they were being covered under Medicare and that they were not falling into the abyss of being uninsured. But the problem with that supplement was and still is. It wasn't something that, that the beneficiaries made a claim for at the end of the year. Instead, they received it as a regular payment. So if they didn't use the money, it was available to them on an ongoing basis. And it's always nice to have extra money jingling in your pocket, but it's not good for the taxpayers, and it's not good for the city to have money that is, is not being used for its designated purpose. And so now we have a situation where there is just a minority of the folks in that particular situation who are receiving those payments, and that is definitely inequitable to the other folks. As somebody who has been on Medicare myself for the past seven years, I have found it covers my needs. I don't have any, any critical medical problems, but it has always been more than adequate for me. And as a retiree from a private employer, I've never had any supplemental payments coming in. Nonetheless, all my medical bills are paid, and there is no, no real shortfall. And I think that it is well past time for the HRA to be discontinued and that money reallocated to other needs within the city. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, just one. Mr. Jonathan Benton?
Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Hello, sir.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to address you today. My name is Jonathan Benton, and I live at fifty-six Elite Bingham Drive in the Churchland area of Portsmouth. Although my wife and I have written to council at least nineteen times, this is the first time that I'm addressing you with this issue in person. I've lived across the street from the intersection of Bingham Drive and Stamford Road for sixteen years. This intersection is. This intersection is part of a cut-through route to get from High Street to West Norfolk Road. The stop sign at this intersection has often been run and cars travel too fast for residential neighborhoods. For years, we have tried to work with the city and police department to improve the effectiveness of the sign and the safety of the intersection. In 2019, Enforcement Director of Engineering informed me that since there were no instructions to the sign, this was not an engineering issue but was simply a law enforcement issue. The police have done some periodic directed patrols of the intersection which did result in traffic stops. The police set up a blinking billboard for two weeks to instruct drivers to come to a complete stop at the intersection. About a month ago, the stop sign was replaced with a yield sign. My wife and I both wrote to council at once after we noticed the change. Neither of us received a response from any members of council. We decided to contact the local news to try to get answers as to why the sign was changed. According to the Portsmouth City officials, traffic engineering and the police traffic unit observed the area and determined that a yield sign is an appropriate traffic control measure based on the geometry and traffic at this intersection. City officials also insisted there were no accidents at this intersection. This statement is false. In fact, the latest accident at this intersection was on December 24, 2020. The individuals involved in the accident called the police. However, I don't know if they waited for the police to respond or if a police report was taken. There was also a hit-and-run accident on December 25, 2020 involving a parked car near the same intersection. During the past three years, there's been at least two accidents at this intersection. A dog was hit and killed and I've seen multiple near misses involving vehicles, bicycles and pedestrians. The decision to change this sign seems to be misguided. I think the decision has more to do with silencing my request for law enforcement to watch the sign than helping to support safety. My neighborhood has many T-intersections with stop signs on the intersecting roadway that have far less traffic. A month ago, there were 52 stop signs in my neighborhood and not a single yield sign. Now there are 51 stop signs and one yield sign, the one that city officials changed at the intersection I had been reporting issues with for years. If the stop sign wasn't the problem in 2019, why is it the problem now? I don't see how any rational person would conclude that changing the stop sign to a yield sign enhances the safety of the intersection. Changing the sign does not make my neighborhood safer and will not persuade me to stop insisting that something be done to improve the safety of my neighborhood. Changing the sign has resulted in drivers getting through the route faster without the need to stop. The change has made the intersection more dangerous than it was before. Now almost no one stops at the intersection and turns the corner into oncoming traffic. Only luck has prevented a tragedy at the intersection so far. I would like to see the stop sign replaced and the enforcement efforts continued. I believe this is the best and safest way to solve this problem. Thank you all for your time. I look forward to hearing a response for my request for the stop sign to be replaced and the enforcement efforts continue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pace, can you look into this matter, please?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, yes, I'm very familiar with Mr. Benton's claims. And the traffic engineering and the police department will also continue to look at this situation and get back with council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, do we have any more speakers?
No, sir.
Are there any other questions or concerns pertaining to the meeting tonight? Hearing none? Excuse me, Vice Mayor, did you have a question?
Can we get an update on the citizens' concern in the next meeting? Well, you can email it to us. I'm sorry.
On this concern, the citizens' concern, the next meeting, I think it was, yes.
Mr. Pace will get that report out to council at the next meeting.
Yes.
He's having some technical issues.
My microphone is acting crazy. Yes, we will either provide that in an update to you, report back through email, or we'll do it at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.